We'd like to call to order the April 19th, 2022 City Council Meeting. Please call the roll.
Garza.
Here.
Fast.
Here.
Badwell.
Here.
Richardson.
Here.
Carlos DiCarvallo.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this morning's prayer will be given by Pastor David Dubois.
Let's pray. Indeed, God, we thank you for this beautiful day that you have in store for us, for the new opportunities that await us. But we know, oh God, each and every day faces challenges. And God, we thank you that we have the ability to process all that may come upon us each and every day, give us that ability to think through and to process all that is before us. Oh God, we, we thank you for our, our mayor, the city council, and leaders at every level in our city. Give them grace to bring truth, justice, and stability to our community. Give them power this day, oh God, to do what is right and to rule in fairness. God, we know that the city of Hutchinson, that this community, we all know that it is a great community to be a part of. And God, as decisions are made this day, may it be for the good for the citizens of Hutchinson. We give you thanks this day, oh God, for the ways that you will bless us. Amen.
Amen. Next item, please.
Item 4A, a proclamation for Crime Victims Rights Week. Are you the Deputy District Attorney?
Thank you.
Great to meet you.
Thank you. So we have Andy Davidson here from the District Attorney's Office to accept this proclamation. Whereas the term victim is more than just a label and has legal standing and protections that go along with it. And whereas crime victims' rights acts passed here in Kansas and at the federal level guarantee victims the right to meaningfully participate in the criminal justice process. And whereas victim service providers, advocates, law enforcement officers, attorneys, and other allied legal professionals can help survivors find their justice by enforcing these rights and victim service providers and allied professionals can reach more victims through innovative, trauma-informed programs such as telehealth services and multidisciplinary teams. And whereas victim service providers and allied professionals can increase access to victim services and compensation in areas that have been historically underserved, marginalized, and adversely affected by inequality by implementing culturally responsive services. Whereas equity and inclusion are fundamental prerequisites to survivor care and survivor-led services that provide victims the opportunities to share their experiences are essential blueprints for support. Whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 24th through 30th, 2022, provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that accessible, appropriate, and trauma-informed services are offered to all victims of crime and the Reno County District Attorney's Office is hereby dedicated to helping crime survivors find their justice by enforcing victims' rights, expanding access to services, and ensuring equity and inclusion for all. Now therefore, as the mayor of Hutchinson, Kansas, I do hereby proclaim the week of April 24th to 30th, 2022, a City of Hutchinson Crime Victims Rights Week, and reaffirm this City of Hutchinson's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during Crime Victims Rights Week and throughout the year, and expressing our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mary. Jody Bryant with, with our office, Victim Witness Coordinator, is putting on a candlelight lighting ceremony on April 28th at 6:30 PM at the South Hutchinson Community Center at 101 West Avenue C. The speaker will be Megan Clary, a forensic nurse examiner at Hutchinson Regional Medical Center. And Nikki Burkhardt from the Bright House will be doing a candle lighting ceremony. And we'd like all who want to come to be invited to that ceremony next week. Thank you. Thank you, Mary.
We have one other proclamation this morning that will be accepted by Justin Combs for Arbor Day. Good morning, Justin. And Chris Wietrich of the Tree Board, thanks for joining us. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property value, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I Jade Pyreste Carvallo, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 29th, 2022, as Arbor Day in the City of Hutchinson, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities. We've got some exciting things planned at our plan for this year's Arbor Day. We actually have three separate events. This Friday on the 22nd, we're going to be planting 16 trees on Third Street between Plum and Lorraine. This is a direct response to the urban forestry assessment we did a few years ago that the Tree Board did that identified areas of town that were lacking in tree cover. So this is our first tree planting we've done that lines up with that assessment. So it's pretty exciting. We finally have an opportunity to, to do some of that work. Also, on the 27th, we have some students from Bueller High School coming to Orchard Park to plant three or four trees along the pond. We're going to train those high school students on how to plant trees. And then the following day on the 28th, on Thursday, the 28th, we'll have all the fourth graders out from Plum Creek, like we've done in previous years, in an event sponsored by City Beverage. We'll be planting about 11 trees then with the fourth graders and then using those high school students to help. So all in all, 30 trees that we were planting this year over about a week's period for Arbor Day.
Great. We can all use a little more gladdening of the heart. Thank you, Justin and Chris.
Mayor and Council, I've, we have some issues pertaining to parks that I think the public has been engaging us on quite a bit in the last couple of days. This might be a good time for Justin to brief us on some of those.
That would be great.
Yeah, I was, I was going to wait till the next section for the public comment, so.
Go ahead, Justin. You're up. We always have time for pickleball.
It's not pickleball today. It could be. Got lots of things. The primary thing I wanted to address is late last weekend over the weekend, you may have seen a Facebook post regarding the condition of the playground at Grandview Park. We have looked at that playground. There are clearly some deferred maintenance issues there that we need to address. You know, there's no excuse for not addressing it sooner. We've talked to our staff. We will get out there, remove the pour-in-place, so the black rubber surface, as well as the concrete that's below, jackhammer that out and, and install new wood chips, as well as some additional minor repairs to the playground. Again, no, no excuse for that. We should have gotten to it sooner. It was on our list. It's just one of those things that apparently has fallen through the cracks. However, I want to take just a step back and talk about playgrounds in general to put this in context. So I've been with the city for going on eight years. When I started in 2014, it was very, very clear to me with the exception of Orchard Park that had just opened. No investment in playgrounds had been made in our community in 20, 25 years. Our new playgrounds were built in the 90s when I arrived. And so I've made a very strong commitment to upgrading our playgrounds. In eight years, not counting Orchard Park, I've replaced seven playgrounds. Of those seven, two were new, so new not replacing something. So those two that are new are directly across the street that was led by the neighborhood. They really wanted that project. The other new one to the system is Southwest Bricktown. The other five were replacements of existing playgrounds that were in worse condition than Grandview. The other thing that I want to point out, of those seven playgrounds, only two of them were actually funded through traditional CIP process. The other five then were either funded through private donations, through grants, or through other creative financing. So again, I'm not trying to make, make excuses for the condition of Grandview. I just wanted to put it in perspective. And even had we gotten to Grandview, that Facebook post could have very well been about the South Playground at Cary Park. It could have been about Bunty Park. It could have been about Fairgrounds Park. We still have playgrounds that are in, in really awful condition. And I think it kind of boils down to three primary causes. First is 25 years with no investment. So I was handed a system that was really out of shape. Second is, I think, we're overbuilt. We have 22 playgrounds in our system. I think a 30% reduction in playgrounds would do a lot of good in terms of our ability to maintain them. I mean, would not cut service level. Since I've been here, we've eliminated a few playgrounds. Cary Park is the primary example. There are eight individual playgrounds in Cary Park. One of those we've already eliminated, that's the one inside Salt City Splash. My long-term goal is to get to four at Cary Park, so eliminating half of the playgrounds. And the third, and probably more prominent issue that, or challenge with playgrounds is the way we finance them or the way we fund them. There has never been an appetite to fund playgrounds through bonding. So then my only resources for, for playgrounds is through the general fund. And so you can see how that competes directly with, you know, new trucks and new mowers and salaries and those sorts of things. So that's why only two of the seven have been funded through, through traditional budgeting. So, you know, I'm going to continue to aggressively pursue alternative funding sources to update our, our playgrounds. But I just want everyone to be aware that it's not a single issue. It's not just Grandview's in terrible shape and we've ignored it. It's 25, 30 years in neglect. So again, there's no excuse for what the condition of Grandview and we'll correct that as soon as we can. But I just wanted to put everything in context.
Yeah, I appreciate the perspective on that. Can we, do we typically not bond because the lifespan is less than 20 years?
I don't know the reason for that. It's always just been a philosophy. You know, current playground, a new playground, major structural components are going to have a 50-year warranty. Decks and slides and things are going to have between a 10 and 15-year warranty and plastic parts usually a five-ish year warranty. So I think that's part of the justification. However, we also bond on street maintenance, crack seal, seal coats that are five or seven-year treatments. So.
Okay. So the council, if it did have a change in philosophy, would have that option to bond if we wanted to prioritize playgrounds? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Yeah. I, I think if we were to prioritize the existing playgrounds, Grandview is near the top of the list. Bunty Park is honestly in worse condition. The South Playground at Cary Park, which is one that could actually be eliminated. There's major issues at Fairgrounds Park as well, so.
I would like to hear where the 30% reduction could be done, because I'm going to say it again. You guys hear it from me a bunch of times. It's better to do a few things really well than a bunch of things poorly. So I would like before we thought about maybe revamping any of that would be a reduction and then.
Yeah, I thought that's what he just said, that he was thinking.
Four of them alone could be in Cary Park.
Yeah, so that would be.
And then a fifth one, and we'll talk about later today at Farmington Park. There's two playgrounds there. There's no reason why we need to. So that's, that's five of, of 22.
Yeah, I know that.
Plus one we've already eliminated.
Yeah, I know that he said that, but I'm saying if he can bring that back to us, an actual plan so that it's not just something that's out in the air. I like things to be solidified and then actual discussion to happen on them. So I would challenge you to.
Go with a long-term plan for all playgrounds and identify which ones could be eliminated.
Justin, do you think the elimination of the 30% could be done with your in-house facilities crew?
Yeah.
So that's not going to be, okay.
The one at Farmington that we'll talk about later, we're going to have the contractor do just because they'll be there with the right equipment. So it just makes sense to have them there while they're there.
While we have you here, can we get an update on?
Pickleball.
Pickleball.
Yeah. So we did open pickleball up a couple of weeks ago. We're still not 100% done. We've been fighting the wind to try to get our wind screens up. We've installed all the benches. I've seen several pictures in Facebook posts of people out playing. So it's exciting to see, see people out using, using pickleballs.
Okay, great.
Hey, Justin, have we got any response from the Kansas State Athletic Association on restriping at Fairgrounds Tennis Courts?
So they are still, it's not necessarily a KESHA issue. It's more of an issue with 308. So KESHA is fine with having shadow lines. 308, we prefer not to have them. They've also funded half of the courts at Fairgrounds. And the other issue is trying to separate the two user groups because we have had conflicts. We were using tape, you know, somebody put tape down and somebody would pull the tape off. So just to try to separate them and give pickleball, I think pickleball is going to be a strong enough sport moving forward. They deserve their own location. By using fairgrounds with shadow lines, it's only available to folks who have temporary nets. So pickleball net is low, doesn't have the sag in it like the tennis net. So you don't use those nets. So you have to bring a net and set it up. So it really doesn't, the average player who just runs the donums or whatever and gets the equipment, unless you have a net, shadow lines at fairgrounds don't really help you.
Okay. Well, I remember the conversation. We were going to revisit that with USD 308 or KESHA and just wondered if we had, or if, if that was your answer, we're just not going to do that with, with the new pickleboard.
What I'd like to do is see what the demand looks like now that we have four. We can, we can double that number at Rice Park because we only did half of those old tennis courts. Because I do still think long-term separating the two groups and giving pickleball their own home. You know, I think now that we've, we've started, we're going to see that the demand for pickleball just skyrocket.
Very good. Thanks.
Anything else want me?
Yeah, Jason, I got a comment. I'd rather not get rid of the, those kids out there who need playgrounds or rather see we can't find some way to fund to fix them up. And then once we fix them up, put them back to where they are, where we have places for our kids to go and play, then that might be more manageable. I think we're going to have a problem taking playgrounds away. That's just my opinion. I'd rather see if we can somehow get them all fixed up with the bond that comes that way. But I think we're going to have a problem taking parks away.
I, I would be very selective on which ones are removed. I use Cary Park as an example because it has so many. I would have a hard time going into a neighborhood park that only has one playground structure and then removing that one. It's where we have multiple playground structures in the same park.
I got you.
Farmington's a great example. We'll talk about that later, but there are two playgrounds there.
Right.
You know, one, it's relatively new. It was built in the 90s. Plus one is probably in the 70s. I'm recommending to remove the one from the 70s and not have to maintain it.
Well, the one park I'm interested in is over there at Elmdale. It looks a mess. I mean, there's people do go there and play. In fact, I go shoot baskets there. Do you, do you have what you're going, I know you're waiting for the railroad on that there.
Yeah. So the story with the basketball and tennis courts at Elmdale is we are waiting on a stormwater plane because at one point there was a plan to make that whole area into a drainage diversion pond, I guess. So I didn't want to invest in, in courts there and then two years later have that all be taken out. So. So I think we have a solid direction with stormwater plan now that we know that's not going to happen. So we can look at improving those courts.
Okay. Thank you.
Council, thank you for letting us, I'll put that out of order. Justin, appreciate it. One of the things too that's frustrated me from other jurisdictions is this product. It's the playground surface itself. It's, it's a premium product. Man, it looks really good when it's first installed. But what the manufacturers initially told cities is this would be a long-lasting product with minimal maintenance is simply untrue. It's, it's very expensive to have put. It's, it's very expensive to have put in, it's fairly expensive to maintain, and it's a thermal set product. So it's not something you can just go in and do a repair with average materials and staffing. It's, it's been one of the issues, too, that causes a fairly new-looking playground to look, you know, old and unmaintained, but thank you all.
Yeah, I've noticed we've had, we have that issue at Orchard Park. So, I mean, we may need to look at replacing the...
We, yeah, staff is definitely worried about one as well. Thanks, guys.
Okay, next item, please.
Item five, oral communications from the audience.
Okay, this is the part of the meeting where people in the audience have the opportunity to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. We ask that you approach the podium, state your name and zip code, and limit your comments to five minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address the council? No, please do.
My name is Gary Edgar, I live at one hundred North Main Street, also known as Wiley Plaza. And I would like to address the council in regard to bicycle traffic on the sidewalks. I understand there's a city ordinance that prohibits bicycle traffic on sidewalks in the business district. And I remember years ago, before Streetscape came in, there were actual signs posted on the lampposts that said bicycles on the sidewalk are prohibited. After Streetscape, those signs disappeared. And my concern is, there are seventy-three apartments in the Wiley Plaza, and most of the traffic goes out on the Main Street entrance. I've had two near misses with bicycle traffic, and I think it's going to pick up instead of reduce, especially with summer coming on. My fear is that somebody's going to get hurt, and I'm not sure where the liability lies in that respect. But I've talked with law enforcement about maybe patrolling that, and have witnessed an officer driving down the street and a bicycle on the sidewalk, but nothing, nothing occurred. I don't know how exactly to address this, other than enforcement of the law. If it's, if it's an illegal thing to do, then it should be enforced, for the safety of the people and for the safety of the bicyclists. I think it can go either way. I've also witnessed a couple of other incidences in other stores on Main Street, where people have been exiting the store and a bicycle nearly, nearly hit them. So that's one of my concerns. The other concern I have is about trash pickup on Main Street. There are trash receptacles on the corners on Main Street, also on First Street at Washington and Poplar. And my understanding is that those trash receptacles are to be emptied on a weekly basis. And according to Stutzman's, they were supposed to pick up on the Friday after Third Thursday. I'm not sure that's happening. And, you know, the winds that we have had in the past month have been unusual. And when those trash receptacles get full, the trash ends up in the street. So I would encourage you to visit with Stutzman's and have them be a little bit more vigilant about that, dumping that trash on a regular basis. Also, we have the Fox Theater on First Street, and when patrons leave, they use the trash receptacles on Poplar Street. So, and in the summertime, the ones on Washington also have been quite overflowing, and that comes from Farmers Market and other areas, too, so. Those are the two items I have.
Okay, thank you for bringing that to our attention. I know that the purpose of the Bicycle Boulevard on Washington was to divert bicycle traffic off of Main. I'm not sure if additional Wayfair signage, oh my word, would be appropriate, or what the cost of that would be. But is that something we should look into?
Yeah, I was taking notes as Mr. Edgar was speaking to us, and we'll definitely look into it. The trash, I personally witnessed the pickup, but what I can't speak to is how well adhered to that schedule is applied by the private contractor, but that's something we'll look at for sure.
Okay, great, thank you.
I, I think that community engagement probably needs to happen before we start issuing tickets for bicycles on sidewalks. I hope, I hope that'll happen. And Gary, I know there's a lot of officers that go up and down Main Street and downtown, I'm sure they're on their way to calls and other things. Am I correct?
Yeah, Jeff Hooper, Chief of Police, yeah, you're certainly correct, and this, you're right with the Bicycle Boulevard in Washington Street, but it's hard to encourage people there. But of course, it is a safety concern in our community, because bicycles and pedestrians usually don't mix. But I also know that some of those cyclists are probably apprehensive to ride their bikes on Main Street with cars backing out and a lot of traffic there as well. And so it's, this is not a unique problem to Hutchison, a lot of downtown areas have this same problem. So I would agree, Councilmember Fast, I mean, this is not something that we want to take strong arm enforcement on. I think just having the officers get out and educate people to the safety concerns, and it is a violation of city code. I think that's where we would start, using our community engagement initiative there. And obviously, if we have a repeat offender, at some point, it may, we may need to take enforcement action, but really don't want to have to start writing citations for people riding their bicycles, especially since most of them are commuting or getting to a job or things of that nature. So we will look at working on that through our community engagement initiative.
Thank you, Chief. Did you have something you wanted to ask?
Me? Yeah, Chief, real quick. Bicycles are treated as automobiles, they're supposed to ride with the traffic, right?
That's correct.
And they're supposed to get in the middle or right behind the car and heave to all the traffic lights and everything. So that's where they're supposed to go, correct?
That is correct.
I see.
Yeah, and they, they have a right to a traffic lane, just like a vehicle does, but they are supposed to also obey all the traffic laws, just like a vehicle when they're driving.
So where they're supposed to go is right in traffic. They're not, like, not supposed to be on the sidewalks, like the ordinance says, it's supposed to be right, right in traffic.
Yeah, in, in business districts. So our ordinance says in business district, obviously downtown is a business district, and so they're prohibited on the sidewalk in those particular districts, and they are supposed to be on the street. In residential areas, it would allow them to ride on a sidewalk in a residential area, that wouldn't be prohibited. But if they are on the street, they do have to obey all traffic laws.
The reason I'm asking that, because I'm driving down the street and I got a bicyclist on the side, he's not in the middle of traffic, he's right beside me, you know what I mean? I could see that as being a problem, but that bicycle has to be, just like a vehicle, has to be in, in traffic.
Well, the, the ordinance says that a bicycle should be driven as close as safe, safely possible to the right-hand side of the road, but they are allowed to take a traffic lane. And being a cyclist myself, I do know that sometimes it's better to take a traffic lane and ride in kind of the middle of the lane. Otherwise, a car will try to squeeze you over against the curb. And so depending on the environment, you know, but they, they are allowed to take a whole lane if they choose.
Okay, thank you.
We don't have a really great shared lane culture here in Hutch, so there's no way I'd be right behind a car.
Just as a note, maybe you could post something on your Facebook page, since a lot of people are on that. And you could specifically put a note, bicycles are prohibited on the sidewalk in a downtown area.
Yeah, that's a great idea, always could do better outreach. Okay, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the council? Hearing none, let's please have the next item.
Item six, consent agenda.
Is there a motion or comments on the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
I was taken by all of them.
Yes, next item, please.
Item seven A, consider ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for fire station number one, Eleventh Avenue Bridge, airport parking lots, and Farmington Park.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance. I believe I have Clayton from Piper Sandler and Tyler from Kutek Rock on the phone with us. I have in front of you an ordinance authorizing parking at the airport improvements, Eleventh Avenue Bridge improvements, Eleventh Avenue Street reconstruct the fire station number one, and Farmington Park bonded costs. As you may be aware, the IRS requires that we pass a resolution or ordinance authorizing bonded project costs before we bond these costs. So these following projects that I listed are included in your ordinance. The airport parking lots has been approved with the residential street project for thirty thousand dollars. The rest of that project and those improvements will be bonded, or will be bid in the fall. The Eleventh Avenue Bridge, the fire station, and the Eleventh Avenue Street contracts have all come before you and been approved. And then you will see Farmington Park later on the agenda. And I have listed the amounts there as well. This is the first part of the project, of the process. The next part of the process will be the resolution to bond the actual costs. So council, along with Kutek Rock and Piper Sandler, recommend approving the ordinance as provided. Are there any questions?
Questions or comments from the council?
What part of the Eleventh Street is getting done again, and includes sidewalks? I know we just went over that, but I'm just trying to refresh my memory, because it's a hot topic right now, Eleventh Street sidewalks.
It's from Main Street, Jeff Peterson, Director of Engineering, it's from Main Street to the Harsha Canal is what's getting redone. And yes, sidewalks are involved, are included in that project.
Okay, thank you.
The Farmington Park amount is more than what is mentioned later in the, the agenda to allow for park equipment. So we are bonding it in this ca, in this case, I think most times the playground equipment is less than fifty thousand, and generally, we don't bond less than that, so that's generally why we don't bond those.
That makes sense. Is there a motion on this item?
What is, all right, what exactly is going on at Farmington Park?
I don't know if we want to jump ahead.
Oh, okay.
Good morning, Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities. I can give you just a quick overview, since you are kind of doing this out of order. So the main improvements at Farmington Park will be a half-mile walking loop on the main section of, of the park. A new crossing over the ditch, if you've been there recently, it's a very kind of sketchy, non-ADA compliant pedestrian bridge. We're going to replace that with actually a cast-in-place box culvert, a sidewalk over the top. Also, we'll be adding a twenty-by-thirty picnic shelter, a basketball court, sidewalks going to the west to connect the main part of Farmington Park to the neighborhood, to the west, as well as irrigation and a few other upgrades, so.
Are we going to take care of stickers?
What's it, exactly, to take care of stickers.
I just wanted to make sure that was in there with this price tag.
That, that was very important to the community, to the neighborhood. We are going to do that piece in-house, that's why it wasn't in the bid, if you, if you read ahead. Irrigation systems by low bid, we have found are not ideal, so we'd like to notice ourselves. Is that good enough for now? We'll get into the product then.
Okay, thank you, Justin. Is there a motion or further comments?
I'd be happy to make the motion, but I made the last one.
Well, I mean, I think it's your, it's your day.
Motion to approve ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, to pay the cost of certain improvements, all pursuant to Charter Ordinance Number Fifty of the city, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
I was taken by all of them.
Yes, next item, please.
Item seven B, consider resolution authorizing sale of taxable general obligation bonds.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance. The next step in the process is to authorize the resolution to actually place the sale of the bonds. So in addition to the projects you just authorized, we will add the Golf Course Master Plan, the Golf and Fun Valley Parking Lots, and the Police Parking Lots. Those three projects were all completed last year, and we didn't issue any bonds last year, so we are including those with this bond sale. The bond sale is scheduled to be May sixteenth, you would, it would come before you on May seventeenth to accept that. And then we would close on the bond sales around June fourteenth, hopefully in time before we start paying, paying major expenses for the fire station. So the council recommends that you approve the resolution as provided. Are there any questions? Questions or a motion?
I would move to approve resolution authorizing the public sale of approximately ten million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, principal amount of general obligation bond, Series Two Thousand Twenty-Two A of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion and second, questions, comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
I was taken by all of them.
Yes, next item, please.
Item seven C, consider quarter cent retailers' sales tax question.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance. Paul Brown is out today, so I have been asked to present this memo for you. Attached is the resolution, which would extend the quarter cent sales tax. It is due to expire March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, so this would extend it to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine. This ordinance would allow us to give it to the county clerk to put it on the ballot for November first of twenty twenty-two. The question might be, why are we doing this in twenty twenty-two when it doesn't expire until twenty twenty-four? That would give us time, in case this were to fail for some reason, to revise our budgets, and also give the opportunity for the Cosmos here and Stratica to amend their budgets as well, if this were to fail. So that's why we're doing it so far in advance. And attached is the language provided for the ballot question. Are there any questions?
Is, I guess, I don't know if it's just organizational question, is there ever any, how does this work in regards to, do we, is this something that is open to be tweaked a little bit? Is it open for discussion on, on how it's put together, or is it just, here's what we're doing? Are you going to put it on the ballot or not?
Staff is presenting this with no changes. You do have the opportunity to make challenge to the ballot question. The way Paul wrote this, I believe what happens is you would accept this ordinance for the ballot question, and then you might be able to tweak persons later, if that was so desired.
That we would have the opportunity, are you sure?
I am not a hundred percent sure on that, Jeff, do you know?
Once you formally approve the, you'll actually approve the ballot question, ask the forum, come back in front of you guys. Once that occurs, it's, it's finite, it's fixed, is my understanding. I think Paul could give us some further guidance on that when he returns, but that's my understanding.
So we'll have one more chance, or is this it?
I, I think you would have one more chance, because this will have to come back, Linda's have to come back one more time for the ballot question, or is this the official?
This includes the ballot question.
Okay, so this is it?
Thank you.
All right, let's discuss.
And this is the same ballot question that has been used in past years.
And I don't necessarily have a problem with it, I just thought, I didn't know if there was a procedure of saying, hey, we're going to put this on the ballot. Do we want to open it up for discussion before we put it on the ballot, or? And I'm, I'm asking.
And some of those internal discussions have happened already, I call them internal, they're really multi-agency discussions with the other taxing groups. So some of that has hit the ground, but as far as the public at large, no related time that they get to cast an opinion on that, it's literally at the ballot box.
Do we have a breakdown visualization that we could put up for everybody to see today?
I did not have that prepared, but... I did not have that prepared, but the percents are 33% goes to the Cosmosphere, 5% goes to Strataca, 15% goes to property tax relief, and then 47% goes to streets and infrastructure. So that's the current percents, which I know aren't included in this ordinance.
Sarah, I'm so glad you brought that up, because some of the media outlets, and maybe it's because, I don't know the reason, but it mentions the fact that the city anticipates replacing sidewalks. And while that's certainly true, that's a portion of the work that can occur from this, and I think historically has, the lion's share of the city's receipts from this are spent towards roadways, streets. So that's, if I'm somebody voting on this, I would want to understand that and to know that for us to maintain a certain index level on our streets, which is not in the 70 or 80 category, it's closer into the 60s, which is, it's okay, but it's an area where we could probably do better. But I would want to understand that this, the passage of this sales tax gives relief to other burdensome forms of taxation that the city would very likely have to consider. So that's, wherever that's worth. It's not just for sidewalks.
I would just remind the council, I know everyone was involved, or most of you were involved in the last budget. So our street budget runs about 2.65 million this year, and I think one point, slightly over 1.2 million dollars is the 47% of this tax received through the quarter cent sales tax. So this would have a pretty enormous impact on our street budget, should we not advance it to the poll for consideration, or should it fail at the ballot box. I think that's what Jeff was alluding to. We would not be able to absorb that without massive service, lowering service. So it would probably have to translate to a mill levy increase, which I'm not excited about. So I'm, I also know that, you know, we've got representatives here from the other organizations that benefit from this, this sales tax, and this is a pretty substantial part of their budget. I'm not sure if council wants to ask questions of Angela first, or if you'd like to hear from those organizations. I'm open to either.
My only concern was, I know that we fall a little short on our streets, so I didn't know if it could be tweaked to where the streets got 50%. I'm not against the sales tax, I'm just wanting a little bit more put towards the streets is what my inquiry is about.
Okay. Any other thoughts on the percentage?
Well, my only problem is, I'm high talking to my, the citizens I represent. I'd like to see this get tabled, so I got two weeks to go talk to the citizens I represent and see how they feel. I have no problem with putting it on because the organization's needed, but I'd like to talk to the, go out and talk to my, the people, all the people that I can think, talk to them about it, and see what, we have to do it, but still, there's times of being a city council member, we have to, we sit here, and we have to prove things that, that, when I question myself, but I'd rather just see us do, can we put it off to the next meeting? That's my particular one. We have to have it.
It has to be to the county clerk by June 1st, I believe, early June at least. So you would have made to be able to approve this ordinance.
My personal opinion, I'd rather get, come back to next meeting.
Well, I will remind you, Steve, that the approval of this isn't, we're not approving the tax. We're just approving the ability of every voter in Hutchinson to vote on whether they want this tax. So.
I understand.
But it's based on these percentages.
Yes.
Exactly.
So if we wanted to be open to changing a couple, a percentage point or two.
That's correct.
We would need to table it.
Or we could discuss that today and amend the.
I would like to get more public feedback before I, before discussion, personally.
That's what I'm getting at, yes.
Well, I do notice that people have taken time from the organizations to be here today, so maybe we should hear from them. I assume they'll come back when we discuss it again, but.
I have no problem with that, to hear from them.
Okay. Michael with Strataca, and Jim and Mimi with Cosmosphere, would love to have your thoughts.
My name is Mike Labels. I'm with Strataca. I'm the Executive Director. So we recently completed an economic impact study. I'll start off with that. The economic impact study actually showed that 95% of our attendance actually comes from outside of Reno County. 74% of that comes from out of the state, Kansas. So we, in 2019, pre-pandemic, we actually received over 50,000 from attendance. And again, 74% of that came from out of the state. Now, we know that we're going to make a, well, we're making rebound at this point in time. According to the numbers that we're showing right now, post-pandemic, I'll say that because we're still not quite out of it, we're roughly about 97% of where we used to be, which is pretty impressive considering the fact that most of the organizations, most of museums in the state of, nationwide, they're still rating roughly about 80% of their normal attendance numbers, according to AAM. So Jim can probably talk a little bit more about that, too, about the fact is, is that we're trending upwards. We're not holding still, we're trending upwards. And again, for the organization such as Strataca, that is a good trend to see. In fact, right now, we were just looking at our sales tax information, and I know at one point it said something to the roughly, to the numbers of like 15.6%. That's not true now. It's roughly about 9.5% of what it used to be. So our sales tax information is actually lower than the 10% or where it used to be. So we're not even asking for what it was. We're asking for just to maintain what it is currently, even though it's less than what our overall operation budget is. Okay? Pretty straightforward. Any questions?
No.
So you're saying that this sales tax provides 9.5% of Strataca's operating budget?
That is correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Hi, Jim Remar, Cosmosphere. I can't underscore the importance of the sales tax to our operation. It accounts for about 16% of our total operating revenue. But more importantly, it does two things. One, it allows us to provide free admission to the Hall of Space Museum for all of Reno County. That includes our new Cosmo Kids, our new renovated galleries. So it provides the citizens of Hutchinson, the citizens of Reno County with something pretty significant. If our percentage were to be reduced, then we would have to look at charging Reno County citizens an admission fee. It also allows us to provide free programming, such as our Coffee at the Cause, our third Saturday reading program, which are free to any community member. It allows us to provide STEM education programming that is vital, not only to schoolchildren here locally in Reno County, but across the state. So a reduction in our percentage would force us to go back and look at these programs. The free programs we provide, the free admission we provide in Reno County, as well as the STEM program. It would force us to look at a reduction in programs. It would force us to look at eliminating staff positions, which none of us want to have to do. The other thing it does is, is it allows us to provide programming that attracts people from outside of Reno County. We do roughly 100,000 visitors on an annual basis, with 75,000 plus coming from outside of Reno County. So the Cosmosphere, coupled with Strataca, has a tremendous economic impact on the county through tourism. It puts people in hotels. It allows people to come, go to restaurants, to shop. So it has tremendous economic impact. The other thing I want to point out is that most museums of our size receive upwards of 35-plus percent of their operating revenue from some type of local or public funding mechanism. We don't have to look anywhere further than to our friends to the south, where Exploration Place and the Zoo both receive about 50% of their operating revenue from the county. So for us, if we were faced with a reduction of our percentage, I would have to then take a hard look at our operation, eliminating a lot of the things that we provide to the community, as well as jobs that are vital to the community as well. Any questions?
Questions?
And may I add, you gave me plenty of information on this, so I can talk to people, but I don't think it's going to change, but I still rather let them know what's going on.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think, I think, again, it's an opportunity for you to talk to your constituents about the importance
Right.
of the sales tax across the board. I would ask that, when you are visiting with your constituents, talk about the importance of the Cosmosphere as, and Strataca as vital tourist attractions, as well as quality of life attractions, and talk to them about the free opportunities that we provide to these constituents. And I will tell you, since we have had Cosmo Kids, we've seen an uptick in younger families from here within Reno County coming to our museum, which is fantastic. And we want to see that continue. Last year, '21, we had one of the best years in the last five or six years. We exceeded 2019, which was a good year. We're on pace to exceed that this year. Again, the sales tax is vital to allowing us to provide these programs that continue to bring people into the Cosmosphere.
Yeah, I don't think, but let's just, for the thought of it, if you got reduced by like 3%, how much would that be impacting you? I don't think you'd have to shut down everything that you're talking about.
I don't have the number in front of me as to what that would do.
I think you just have to be more competitive, right? Get creative.
I don't think it's as simplistic as that. I think if we were to receive a 3% reduction, you know, we're talking probably a six-figure impact to us. So we would absolutely then charge admission to Reno County citizens to offset that cost, and probably have to look at elimination of programming and/or employees.
What's their current percentage right now?
33%.
So if it went from 33% for 30%, you would have to start charging.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I would disagree with that.
I would invite you to come to the Cosmosphere. In fact, I left you a message and did not receive a return call to talk about this. But I would invite you to come to the Cosmosphere, and I can show you the numbers, and you can look at our budget, but you're incorrect in that assessment.
I think that one of the most compelling pieces of information you provided us is that benchmarking public support for museums across the country, the Cosmosphere and Strataca receive less than half of what is typical. So we know that museums are economic drivers, but they are also not profit centers. They are there to make quality of life better for constituents. So I think it's pretty astonishing what both these organizations have been able to do with such sparse public support compared to most museums across the country. Nine and a half percent and 16% of an operating budget, when most museums get 35 to 50% from the public coffers. I think you've been a very good steward of taxpayer funds, so I just wanted to show appreciation for that.
Now, Councilmember Bagwell, if we were to receive a 3% reduction, I mean, we're talking in excess of $100,000. So I don't see how you can even begin to assume that that wouldn't have that much of an impact on our operation. To try and make that up, we would absolutely have to charge Reno County, as well as look at elimination of programming and employees.
I would just think if it was 30% instead of 33, and then you said, well, we'll start charging Reno County, then I don't think it's going to pass the ballot box.
I think that's something the council has to take into consideration.
These entities also bring in dollars from outside the city instead of just recycling dollars within our city, too. That's important to remember as far as an economic driver.
I think one of the key factors for us is the fact that we are able to provide free admission to the citizens of Reno County.
I think that would be a bad business move, over 3% of funding, to start charging.
That may be your opinion, but I've got to look at keeping my doors open. And if I were to receive a reduction, would absolutely have to look at charging Reno County, as well as eliminating staff positions. So, I mean, that's just the nature of it. I mean, this has been a vital component of our operating revenue for, since the 90s. And to be faced with a reduction would force me to evaluate the entire operation. We've placed a lot of emphasis over the last couple of years on STEM education and providing incredible opportunities for the schoolkids here locally, as well as across the state to come and partake. If I were to receive a reduction, I would have to look at eliminating some of those programs that have become pretty instrumental in helping our kids understand the exciting nature of STEM education. So, you know, it's going to have a pretty significant impact on what we're able to do.
By no means, I brought this up to cut you. No means, just more information from my, to people, because I get asked about this all the time. Now you just helped me understand it a little bit better. No means that I was going to cut you at all, so.
Sure, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the questions and the conversation. But I also need you to understand
Right.
what that means to us as the Cosmosphere, but more importantly, what that means to the community as a whole. And it means significant changes
Right.
to my operation.
No, you're well-welcome in Hudson, Kansas. You've done a good job. But me, as a council member, I have to talk to people so that they understand what's, because they ask me questions about this all the time. Now I understand it a little bit better.
Sure, absolutely.
So I want you to make sure you understand. I have no means of, I just want to, my job as a city council member is to get all the information that I can on things and let them, and talk to them about it.
Sure. And the other thing I want to also bring up is, is we bring 13,000 to 14,000 schoolkids into the Cosmosphere on an annual basis.
Yes.
Again, without the full percentage that we currently get, there's potential to impact that as well. So I invite any of you to contact me, to come to the Cosmosphere. We can have further conversations. You can look at the budget. We can review that together. But the reality is, is a reduction, even as minimal as 3%, that sounds like a very minor reduction, has very significant impact on my operation.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Are there additional questions?
Here, one of the things I looked at when I was trying to get my head around it, because it's a five-year issuance, and it's not issuance, but a five-year duration. And so I'm trying to figure out, what's the voter confidence been historically? You always look at that. If you're close, maybe you need to modify, maybe you need to do something different. It's my recollection that the voter confidence and the passage rate of this has been pretty, pretty strong. I think I'm correct in that assumption. It's been a few weeks since I've reviewed that, but I haven't seen anything in the trend line that would suggest that there's a reduction in confidence and how the users are using it, having really nothing to do with some of the other pieces of this conversation. But it does seem that there's quite a bit of confidence in how it has historically been used, maybe. Again, that's me reading the tea leaves a little bit. I'm not an expert at that, but it's interesting. Thank you.
Yeah, I believe it was, maybe it's past, at 68%?
Just under 70, like 69% in the last election, and I think it's 72% the election prior to that.
Okay, yeah.
We also had a higher sales tax at that time, too.
Oh, that's right.
I think we were at 9.1 on the last election. We're at 8.6 now.
Yeah. I do appreciate the additional discussion and what you brought up, Sarah, because I think that this is always, it's always been tossed around, do we need to look at those percentages? So.
Yeah. Because, you know, there's a lot of people that like it because it would make a huge impact if we slightly adjusted it for our roads. You know, people really feel that when they, we pay that quarter cent tax because of our roads and that, you know, and our. we pay that courtesan tax because of our roads and, you know, and it does really help us. And like you said, it helps you a lot, but it would also help the city a lot, too, if we could reinvest some of that money into our roads and sidewalks. So, you know, it is a challenge on who gets what piece of the pie. I'm sure Strata could be like, "I'd like to have a bigger piece," or, you know, and sometimes sharing a little bit. I mean, I'm just thinking that it needs to be adjusted a little bit to help, to help the roads. Because a lot of people vote on it for the roads. Because it is a heavy, heavy road tax and then they expect a certain quality out of it. We've been underfunding our roads by a million dollars even with this. So there's a lot of concern about, can't, you know, we're paying this. And a lot of people vote for it for the roads and they feel like they're not getting that reinvestment back in.
Yeah.
And even though we do use it for that, if we had just a little bit more towards the roads, that could help us, too, with our budget.
Yeah, I certainly respect that. We've always struggled to maintain our pavement condition to the degree we would prefer. But I would offer that, you know, community is more than just streets. And I think that the, again, going back to quality of life amenities and I think we get a lot of bang for our buck in leveraging of a smaller amount with these two organizations. Did you have thoughts?
I'm Mimi Meredith, also with the Cosmosphere. And I just wanted to bring one more fact to everyone's attention, which certainly helps me process this, is that for each of our organizations, even though the percentages are different, each represents 50% of our budget. So I'm not sure what percentage this represents in the city's street budget. But for us, that is enormous. And as the person who seeks to
So it is 50%? Because I thought he said it was 16%.
It's 15, here, I have, it's 16% of our operating budget. It's 50, I have all of this right here.
So we are on par with other?
No.
So other areas spend more than 50%?
Does anybody else want a copy of that?
I would like one, if you have some.
I do. It's also important to realize that we have to make up, through what we call unearned revenue, the differences. So there is no other way, being the person on staff at the Cosmosphere who helps generate that revenue, than to Jim's point, cutting the budget. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we can share with Greg, yeah.
I just, so let me ask Jim to clarify. But Sarah, do you see on the, I think it's the third bullet point down?
Sure.
So even though the amount is different, for each of us, we work through annual fundraisers, through community events, and through a very aggressive grant writing campaign to do what we can to make our annual budget each year. I can't imagine what we would do if this was changed. So with all sincerity, I think that each of us, and I don't mean to speak for you, Michael, but does exactly that, to be good stewards of the amount that we receive. And now I want Jim to clarify, because I didn't say correctly, the 50%.
I just, I want to reiterate that the sales tax accounts for about 16% of our operating revenue. And the national average of public support is 35% plus. Just want to make sure that that was clear.
So if either was reduced, it would be a significant blow to either organization, which, to Michael's point, I appreciated that you said we have a lot of ground to make up, considering that we just came through a pandemic and we are absolutely dependent upon people coming through our doors. We couldn't do curbside delivery of our services during the pandemic, although we're working to find ways to pandemic-proof our operation. We certainly would still consider this a huge amount of support from the council.
Thank you, Mimi. So with that, we either need a motion or a motion to table from the council.
I'd like to make a motion to table till next meeting, if we can.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Horace DeCarolla?
Yes, next item, please.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all very much for coming.
Item 8A, consider tower number three bid results.
Morning, Council, Jessica Lowe, Engineering. Tower three is a 500,000 gallon water storage tower located on East 11th, next to Fire Station Four. That's by Halsted. The tower was last coated in 2005 and a recent inspection of the tower identified several maintenance items. To address those items, the interior and exterior surfaces will be recoded and new safety climb systems and all the interior ladders will be installed as well. So on Monday, April 11th, the city received four bids for this project. The low bid of $242,500 was received from Maguire Iron Incorporated and staff recommend city council accept the low bid of $242,500 and authorize the mayor to sign the contract. Have any questions?
Was it everything you expected? 303? Good, much better than expected.
Slightly better than expected. There's a lot of work right now for everyone with all the money floating around, so I wasn't sure if bids would come in a little bit higher or, you know, whatever. But all four of our pre-qualified bidders actually submitted bids, so that was encouraging.
Great. Okay, is there a motion on this item?
I would move to accept a little bit from Maguire Iron Incorporated in the amount of $242,500 and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Horace DeCarolla?
Yes, next item, please.
Item 8B, consider request to exchange federal funds.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Jeff Peterson, Director of Engineering. Today, we are considering the federal funds exchange with KDOT. We do, we've done this since this program was initiated by the state back in 2013. And this allows us to exchange federal dollars for state dollars. This year, the amount we would receive is $508,326.21. By exchanging these funds, federal funds for state funds, we can actually put this money directly to our street maintenance programs. And it's a big part of that. It's a critical funding source for the city's arterial and residential street maintenance projects each year. Street maintenance projects would not be eligible if we didn't exchange this type of funding. We'd have to do, we'd have to do some other, we'd have other federal requirements to deal with this and would have to do a programmed project that takes about 18 to 24 months to come in to be able to bid and be a project for the city. So I see a big benefit this because we actually apply this and spend it within the year we get it on our street maintenance projects. About, of course, 500,000. The other are the courtesan sales tax that goes into this also, among some other general fund projects. So, I mean, general fund funds. So I would recommend that we, the council approve the federal funds exchange agreement with the Kansas Department of Transportation. And now, you guys have any questions? Go ahead.
Is this basically bypassing the federal procurement guidelines?
Well, that
And all that red tape?
Yeah, it gets rid of a lot of red tape. And like I said, it goes directly to our projects. We don't have to procure for engineers. I mean, there's, though we lose 10%, I think there's a, there's a little agreement, not agreement, there's a little, I have a brochure that the KDOT put together costs with respect to federal funds and state funds on, depending on how much you get. That this actually, you come out farther ahead by being able to do this. And we can use it on a lot wider variety of projects for the city. Those would have to be on a federal aid street or highways, pretty much, or just our arterial streets that would be applied for if we didn't do that. So this allows us to use it throughout the city as a whole, so. And it's, like I said, 90%. A few years ago, it was, they did reduce it to like 85, 15%, but they've, since then, they've wanted to keep it up at the 90, 10 range, so.
Well, I definitely have concerns of losing $50,000, but
Right.
those of you that do this for a living, obviously you feel like that is very beneficial.
I believe it is, because we don't have to put it into other costs that we don't see that go right on the streets, so.
Okay, is there a motion or further questions on the side?
Motion to approve the request to exchange federal funds and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Horace DeCarolla?
Yes, next item, please.
Item 8C, please view the bid results for Farmington Park Development Project.
Good morning, Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities. Real quick, I wanted to digress to a question about Orchard Playground surface. It was in the budget in 2022 and we are scheduled in October, I believe, to have the top inch of that surface replaced. That way, we're only replacing the top inch, not the entire thing, so it doesn't continue to downgrade. Sorry to digress, but just wanted to answer that question. All right, Farmington Park. Oh, this is the wrong PowerPoint. Well, we will go on without the PowerPoint.
Is this the wrong one?
That is the wrong one. No worries. Please enjoy the music. So the budget for this project is 515,000. That was approved in the 2021 budget. The design committee for this was former Assistant Director Sean Thomas, Adam Stewart from Hutch Rec, who's the Neighborhood Development Coordinator, and then myself, the primary designer, landscape architect, I was Vance Voth, from here in Hutch Engineering Consultants. If you're not super familiar with Farmington Park, it's basically in three blocks, as you can see highlighted there in red. For the most part, it's undeveloped. The only development to really speak of at this point is right here, there's a small wood gazebo and then that is the bridge I talked about earlier, the pedestrian bridge that's non-ADA compliant, and then a playground structure right there. So for the design, kind of like I alluded to earlier, the base bid is this half-mile walking loop, as well as the new crossing over the drainage ditch. Alternate one is a basketball court right along Farmington Road. We wanted to separate that from where it might have some younger kids playing down at the playground. Alternate two is a new pavilion, so 20 by 30. It's the same size as Southwest Bricktown, so it's a fairly nice, fairly large pavilion. Alternate three is a sidewalk extension. So right here, my highlighter is, is the basketball court, so same, same here. So we're adding a sidewalk to the west, really to provide connectivity. This neighborhood does not have sidewalks. So while we didn't have enough to fully develop this portion of the park, we can at least provide some off-street access to the main park. Alternate four is some earthwork. You can see that kind of highlighted in green here. The intent here is primarily to make it not look like a ditch. So we will do some cutting and some regrading to give it a little bit of interest, as well as we are going to increase the holding capacity for water, not significantly, but the idea here is just to make it, like I said, not look like just a straight ditch through there. And then the final alternate, alternate five, there is a playground right in here where my cursor is now. It's a really old one. We've removed pieces of it already. But alternate five is to go ahead and remove the rest of that. So bid results. This is one of the tightest bids I've ever done. So Prairie Land Works, Adam McPherson, were technically a low bid, $383,416. Our other bidder was Ward Davis from Hutchinson. I can see his bid was just a few hundred dollars more. This does kick in to play the local preference policy, which I have the whole thing there for you. I highlighted the important pieces in bids that are greater than 15,000. If the local bidder is within 3% of the low bid, they have 24 hours to match the low bid, which Ward did, Ward Davis did match the low bid of $383,416. So it is my recommendation to proceed with Ward Davis using local preference prop policy for an amount not to exceed $383,416. We also do have Adam in the, from Hutch Rec is here to talk if you have questions for him about the neighborhood engagement. This process was not done in just an office at Engineering Consultants on North Main. We had lots of contact with the neighborhood, as well as, I believe, there are three neighborhood residents and Ward is here as well. So I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have for me or if there's anybody else would like to speak.
Okay, are there questions or comments from the council?
I only had the one question. If we're going to spend this much money, you're going to get rid of the stickers.
Absolutely. That was number one. Number one, yeah.
I love these, seeing these community-driven projects. Love the way that the Neighborhood Development arm is working to make sure that people have a say in what happens in their neighborhoods. So do you want to speak to that at all, Adam?
Yes, my name is Adam Stewart. I'm the Neighborhood Development Coordinator with Hutch Rec. I brought a timeline of things from the Farmington Park project with me. In 2017, the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative began work with the neighborhood around Farmington Park, the Farmington subdivision. In 2018, they chose, the residents chose the name Farmington Park Neighborhood rather than simply Farmington Neighborhood because they recognized how important the park was to their neighborhood. It's right in the middle of everything. I haven't counted how many houses look out directly onto the park, but it's, it's in the dozens. In 2019, the residents partnered with the Parks Department to make some improvements around the existing gazebo. They received some funding from the Hutchinson Community Foundation in the amount of $2,500 from a Make It Greater grant to place some benches in the park. The Parks Department power washed the gazebo to strip off the old varnish and a group of, I think it was about 10 residents, came out in April and restained it, really making it look a lot fresher, taking off years of age. And along with that, the Parks Department upgraded the electrical service to the gazebo and added a new, larger grill by the gazebo, upgrading its use as a space for neighborhood events, which the neighborhood has used repeatedly for National Night Out. The same day they did the restaining project, they also had a spring picnic. And then in 2020, the neighborhood received another Make It Greater grant from the Hutchinson Community Foundation for tree planting in the park in anticipation of further improvements. So that kind of brings us to today on the work with the neighborhood. We had many meetings over the course of the last four years where things got into the topics of what the neighborhood would like to see in the park. And the top items were the walking trail, the second picnic shelter, so they could have larger items were the walking trail, the second picnic shelter so they could have larger events there, and the basketball court. There aren't any good-sized basketball courts particularly close to the park, and there's a neighborhood resident who allows neighborhood kids to play basketball on his driveway, but would like to, to see them have a better option.
Do any of the residents from the neighborhood want to speak?
I will.
Okay.
I'm Harland Depew, we live on the northwest end of the park, and my wife and I purchased a home here in Hutchinson specifically considering location and access to parks and trails, and so we're, we're really excited about the improvements there. It's been a rewarding experience working with Adam, and at the meetings that we've had, you know, up to date, city staff with Jeff and Justin and others as well, it's just been a lot of fun, you know, to work with these folks and, and see this project come to, you know, come to fruition, so I'd just like to thank the council and ask for your support, I guess, it's not approved yet, but, but it's, it's an exciting time for us up there in that neighborhood, and I think it will, it will be an improvement for the neighborhood, it'll, it'll increase, you know, potentially housing values in that, in that area as well, and so we're excited about it.
Thank you. Are there additional questions, comments, or a motion on this item?
Thanks, Harland, for getting involved, it does make a difference when people say what they want, and it sure makes us listen.
I would make a motion.
Sure, please do.
I move to utilize local bidder's preference policies to accept the bid from Ward Davis Builders for the Farmington Park Development Project for an amount not to exceed three hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars, and authorize the mayor to sign all associated documents.
I'll second that.
Okay, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Horace Stickerhaller?
Yes, before calling the next item, I'd like to take just a short recess and reconvene at ten thirty, at which time Vice Mayor Richardson will finish the meeting for me as I have a work obligation to attend to. Thank you.
human relations officer, and it did part-time, and then when I came in, I thought that it was important for the commission to sort of have a roadmap to any of the plans that they have for the future, and also I thought it was important to use this money that we've received from the foundation, although we're almost out of our first year, in ways that are going to have long-term impact for the community as far as human relations for our community. I like to talk to people just about the Human Relations Commission and how, when I was a commissioner, it felt like we were running like chickens with our heads caught off, just because there was no sort of roadmap of what we were supposed to do, and I'm really hoping this does this for us, and Carrie from the Community Engagement Institute is here too, if you have any questions about sort of their process, but yeah, the goal is just to try to remind the commission and the community of the mission of the Human Relations Commission, and try to provide programming for our community that aligns with that mission, or maybe rethink what the mission of the Human Relations Commission should be.
Okay. Any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the proposal from Wichita State University Community Engagement Institute on an amount not to exceed sixty-four hundred and eighty-six dollars, and authorize the mayor to sign all and associated documents.
I'll second that.
Okay, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Horace Stickerhaller?
Yes, before calling the next item, I'd like to take just a short recess and reconvene at ten thirty, at which time Vice Mayor Richardson will finish the meeting for me as I have a work obligation to attend to. Thank you.
All right, we've got 10:30. We'll come back to order. Please call the next item on the agenda.
Item 8D, Consider Strategic Planning Services for the Human Relations Commission.
Good morning, council. Dave Stell, Human Relations Officer. In front of you, you have the strategic planning for the Human Relations Commission. We received a grant for $4,750 from the Fund for Reno by the Community Foundation to pray for strategic planning. We also, on top of that, separately have $20,000 a year for a period of three years that we received from the foundation that's also paying for this. We budgeted about $9,000 for this, and we had only one bid from the Community Engagement Institute at Wichita State to do this for $6,486. My recommendation is to accept the proposal and authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Wichita State University Community Engagement Institute.
Any questions or comments? Could you speak a little bit as to what the end goal is for this study, please?
Yeah, so the Human Relations Commission, as you know, had, for a time, no full-time human relations officer, and it did part-time. And when I came in, I thought that it was important for the commission to sort of have a roadmap to any of the plans that they have for the future. And also, I thought it was important to use this money that we've received from the foundation, although we're almost out of our first year, in ways that are going to have long-term impact for the community as far as human relations for our community. I like to talk to people just about the Human Relations Commission and how, when I was a commissioner, it felt like we were running like chickens with our heads cut off, just because there was no sort of roadmap of what we were supposed to do. And I'm really hoping this does this for us. And Carrie from the Community Engagement Institute is here, too, if you have any questions about sort of their process. But yeah, the goal is just to try to remind the commission and the community of the mission of the Human Relations Commission and try to provide programming for our community that aligns with that mission, or maybe rethink what the mission of the Human Relations Commission should be.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the proposal from Wichita State University Community Engagement Institute on an amount not to exceed $6,486 and authorize the mayor to sign all and associated documents.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Can we get a vote, please?
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Pyma Stickor-Hall.
Thank you very much.
Item 8E, Discussion of Salt City Investments LLC, purchase of Salt City Business Park Real Estate.
Thank you, guys. I'll just jump in on this real quick. Previous discussion has been held on this publicly by the governing body, and this relates to the development of a known site in the business park, and it will involve 20 acres. The internal discussions, and I think some of the growing external discussions, have supported the concept of it being a discounted land conveyance, $5,000 an acre. That comes up to the amount of 100 grand. And what we want to do is set this up to where some level of approval can be granted, authorizing the mayor to execute the documents, so that the investor developer can go ahead and get a materials order, because as you guys know on a daily basis, those numbers are going up to the roof. I think that was what I understood to be the issue of urgency on that. I think there's some other items that have to be handled by the developer as part of the conveyance, but pretty sure Paul's aware of those. So you don't have anything formal in front of you, I don't believe, in the packet to act on formally. Is that right? Because this was an amended packet that went out.
I don't see anything for formal approval.
Okay, that was my understanding as well. And I was out yesterday, so that's why I'm playing catch-up here on the fly. So I think with general consensus of the governing body, we square away several things. One, the fact that we intend to convey property for 5,000 an acre and the total amount of acres to be conveyed inside the industrial park. I think that alone would give formality sufficient for preparation of the documents and then authorize the mayor to sign.
I think just the one item, at one point, I know this is a year or two ago, we were discussing property out there, and we were looking at pricing at per usable acre, because there's some properties out there that have acres that you can't build on it.
Yep.
Is that still what we're trying to do with the wording?
Yeah, that's true, and I think that's the way they proposed it. They declared that the combination of those lots would be the usable acres.
Okay.
Exactly right.
And we're setting it at 5,000 per usable acre?
Yes.
Any comments, discussion from anyone?
This is out in the industrial park?
That's correct.
I know, I think we went over this. How, sorry. I know we want to protect some of our industrial parks by keeping it within the city and doing leases, so that we have a certain amount that we kind of control. Do you see this play into that, or is this usable land that we're comfortable conveying? That's my only question.
What makes this a little more unique than a conventional lease transaction would be, we have a known concept for construction, so we have had other requests that have come in that haven't had that clarity. So the issue of discounting the land for a known project that's suitable and in keeping with the spirit and intent of the industrial park, that has some value to the overall discussion. I think it's probably a pretty good fit, a lot of confidence in the project, as demonstrated by the list of investors that are local, which is always a good thing. I think one of the issues we discussed early on as a potential liability related to whatever development we do on those parcels could trigger some of the contract language under the development agreement for cements. And discussions with the city attorney, I know that he intends to frame some specific language that will safeguard the city, and frankly, I don't think it's an element that's anticipated to be part of the development of those specific tracks. So probably not a hindrance to anybody, but a protective measure for the city.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I guess I would ask, are we setting a precedent here by the dollars per acre? And since it is a sale of public property, should this be an executive session? A couple questions, I mean...
If you are purchasing property as a city and you have to be concerned about other potential purchasers, having your private information that's going to hinder your potential purchase, that is a protected element of executive session. The sale of property, not so much. It's less protected. As far as precedent-setting properly, but as far as it having a legally binding impact on the city that you forever shall offer to anyone this fixed price and agree to terms of sale, no. That's one of the nice things about a development agreement. A lot of cities push for that, you'll see. Yes, we'll sell you the property, but we want to have that development agreement appended as Exhibit B, so that we have control over the outcome of that property and how it's to be developed. It puts us in a better position than just blindly selling to someone a vacant parcel, which there have been times I'm sure the city would consider doing that, just to get movement. So I think I heard, too, from Deborah, that there's already significant movement on the potential building. So I mean, that end of it's already coming together, just like they anticipated it would.
Mr. Garza, do you have anything to say?
No, not right now.
Okay, I'll just check.
Consensus?
I think I'm fine with the agreement.
Yes.
Okay, I think you have consensus.
Okay, great. Terms stipulated. Yep, very good, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Next item, please.
Item 9, Report to City Officials.
Would you start us off, Ms. Bagwell?
I don't have anything today. I'm sure I do, and I'm not thinking of it, but...
All right. Mr. Fast?
I have nothing.
Mr. Garza?
Of course, I have something. I was sitting here thinking all this time. It's like I said before, we have Thursday, we get this document that we're going to go through. And me, as a council member, I have two, an angel on my left, angel in my life, and I read, when I see this, one guy says, "Pass it." The other guy says, "You know better than that, you can't pass it." So what I'm trying to get at, it's a lot of responsibility. And I take my councilmember seat really, really personally and be responsible. I know the other councilmembers do the same. So you have a real good council that's sitting here, and I just wanted to make sure that you know that it's hard to make decisions. We deal with a lot of money here. And someday, I hope that the southeast district will have a neighborhood, so I can get a park over there someday. So just remember us when we get to that point. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Leanne Kokske, you got the award, was it last week, in JCAA Award?
Yeah.
All right, I wanted to mention, that's all I had to mention. Mr. Cantrell?
Thank you very much. I have a few items here to discuss. One of the items is not a small item, but it's one that we discuss frequently. Woody See, we did get a return on the RFQ/RFP process on that, and it was only one. And there's some information that we picked up along the way that might be compelling in guiding the governing body which direction they want to go. And it's not something I can put in front of you. It was a formal document of denial, but in conversations with the permitting side of the railroad, what they have said was, I guess in layman's terms, "We can't formally deny you, because we don't have anything yet formal in front of us," but anticipate a denial when this does come in front of us in its formal capacity. If I'm completely out of the park on that, now's a good time to correct me, but I think that's what I heard.
Yeah.
So we've got the ability to further study it, of course, and I think it'd be considerable funds to do so. But if this is a point where you perceive diminished interest, maybe even from the Bricktown neighborhood, I've heard from one particular property owner that told me specifically, since the time of the last meeting where this was discussed, was that the Main Street option, really, it's nice to talk about, but it's not really viable, very likely. Talking to one person doesn't really establish a trend in the community. But I'm curious and wondering if you guys have heard similar conversations that might change the direction on where you intend to go with this study. We can further engage the study and go down that route.
I don't want to waste money.
I understand.
I'm just throwing it out there like that. I mean, I understand we need to get the... But if it's not viable, then I don't feel right spending the money to study something that's no longer viable. I can't bring myself to do that.
No, I couldn't agree with you more, Sarah.
Although I like the idea. If it's not viable, it's not viable.
If we already know what the answer is, and I don't know, Jessica, how much the RFQ was, was it $100,000-ish? I mean, that's a lot of money to spend if we already know the answer.
So the way we hire consultants is through quality-based selection, so we hadn't entered into the proposal part yet. We sent out an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications, and then received only one qualification statement from a team. We actually only had one other consultant that was even talking to us during that period. The overwhelming response from both of them was, "Don't do this. You won't get the answer you want from the railroad. We're happy to do this study, but it's not going to give you the answer that you want." We went forward with the qualification process. We got that one, like I talked about, and in the meantime, was finally able to get ahold of someone, like Jeff said, at the railroad. And I talked to them extensively about this, and once they understood what we were saying, yeah, it was a little more strongly worded than that, but it was a hard no. There's no way, in any scenario, this would ever be approved, I think is kind of how that was put. Which brings up the question again, do we really want to move forward? The estimate for that study is somewhere between 100 and 150,000, depending on how far we want to take it, how detailed we want it to be. And we kind of, now with the railroad getting back to us, we know what the answer would be. So if we want something, like Jeff said, in writing, we would have to go through a formal process, which would cost us an extensive amount of money to do that study, just to be able to get the formal paperwork in front of the railroad, and then to get something back from them. It would also take a lot of time, which, as you all know, we don't have a lot of right now. And so, yeah, I guess the rest is up to you. I would like to add, if you did decide that Option 5 is off the table, and you're not sure what other option to go with, I'll remind you that the other options all included work from Avenue C to Avenue A, that we could decide what option... That's where the option is. What's not an option is from Avenue C to Avenue F, or to the Arkansas River, doing the mill and overlay of that section. So if we take Option 5 off the table, we can start with the mill and overlay part and the stormwater improvements part now, with your approval, and get going on that. So we're not waiting another year or two years. And, you know, there's always the additional cost share funding that'll become available this fall that we could go after for that, if we had some sort of consensus now.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do know they're having a meeting, the task force is having a meeting on Friday. I don't know if you got that.
I think it's Thursday.
Is it Thursday? The task force is having a meeting on Thursday. We'll relate what you said to them and say, "Maybe we can get you a decision." But I do know they meet this Thursday, so...
Do we need to look at putting something on the agenda for the next meeting to move this forward? That way, we can have the Thursday or Friday meeting with the neighborhood, and then we can, we're going to move forward, making a decision on what route we're going to go with it?
It's...
Yeah, we either pull the band-aid off, or it's going to piss people off no matter what.
It's really within the purview, the scope of the governing bodies, to how you want to handle that. Certainly, in the meantime, based on the conversation we've had, we know not to go further in engagement of... And that was really our first part of the question, but there is some timing elements that I don't think would be hindered by a two-week gap. Would it?
No.
Okay, okay. So it shouldn't be a problem. Does that work for both of you?
I think that's fair.
All right.
Yeah. I still like the option where it just comes down to a stop sign or traffic light with sound walls.
Well, all the options, I guess, are up for discussion at this point, so we'll wait to hear what you guys have to say.
If I remember right, Sarah, that was a design feature that would not be discussed yet.
The sound wall is a design feature, that's right.
Just started out there.
Well, I appreciate you getting back with the railroad. I know that wasn't why you called the railroad, or what discussion you were having with the railroad, but the fact that it came up. And I think, if I remember right, that was our ask from the very beginning, could we even consider doing this? And obviously, the answer is no.
Well, I'm glad that they got back to us before we spent a significant amount of time and money on a dead end. So that's positive, I guess.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Cantrell, do you have anything else?
I do. Thank you. We have received an administrative request for $7,500 for support in the Chamber's annual meeting. Now, what this would do, this would, we would be a half sponsor and a participant in supporting their keynote speaker. That's a super-secret topic right now. I guess that's not to be released prior to official sale date or something, the tickets. I didn't realize that, but I have reviewed those documents. I know this person exists. And it would be done in conjunction with the county, so the total dollars in would be $15,000, and we would be partners, governmental agency partners, in doing that. Thing is, this isn't programmed in the budget. That doesn't mean we can't afford it. We can move some money around and make it happen. But if you did favorably consider doing this, I think you'd want to have a provision in there that somehow does it in conjunction with the county, so that if one does it, the other does it. But if the other one doesn't do it, we certainly don't do it. That way, you're not the only participant funding it, and you have some reliance on the county to participate in an equal share.
Was this already put in front of the county? This hasn't been put in front of the county?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and it was represented to me by Randy, that he had a high degree of confidence that his governing body would approve it, under the same terms of discussion that we're having now.
Comments?
So really, formal action not required, but if there's strong objection to that, I'd want to know. We'll just move forward with it unless there is strong feelings against it.
Well, I don't know. You know me. There's a lot of little money that's thrown around. I understand it's just a small amount, but you're going to be asking for more in three years. That's how it always goes.
So we have that, and what I'm hearing is that we, I think it's probably fair to note your objection to the record. Sarah, would that be fair?
Yeah, objection to the record.
Okay, we'll register that. But then, as far as the majority being in general support, I think that's probably an equally fair thing to say. I think I'm seeing head nods. Okay, real good. We'll proceed forward with that. Thank you, guys. Okay, I was going to talk about Shadow Lines Pickleball, but I don't have to do that now, thank goodness. That's it. Thank you, guys.
All right. Next item, please.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
Second.
Motion, a second, please. Call roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Oh, man, it's pouring down rain.
Nice job, Sarah. Hold on.